We got huge skin, eh?
Yeah.
Oh, we were there too, for the game, eh? Okay. No, we were, we were there because she had a concert at the, whatever that hall was, whenever she was singing. That's in St. Paul. Yeah.
You getting nervous?
They don't, yeah, they just, they don't have all of them.
I'm going down. Your thing's pretty dumb. We're gonna prepare you.
Wow, that's, that, that's been many years.
She appears regularly.
Yeah, I have to do it, I guess. The prep is the worst, absolutely. The best part is when you finally need to stop something, not something.
I'd like to call the Lancaster Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. In the unlikely event of an emergency, if we have to evacuate the room, please note the locations of the exits. At this time, I ask that you silence your cellphones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today, we remain standing for Susan Lynch, a teacher aide in the district since 2003, who passed away on November 2nd, 2021, and for Bruce Smith, a math teacher from 1963 to 1998, who passed away on November 22nd, 2021. Thank you. All right. I would like to thank Mr. David Lowery, Executive Director from Erie County School Boards Association, for coming tonight. And we do have a presentation 4.0, Model UN, Michelle Ziegler and Mary Ann Pantera.
Is that on? Did you hear? Your name or not? Okay. All right, good evening. I was honored when Mrs. Pantera asked me to do the introduction for our Model UN students. And I also wanted to recognize the efforts that they put in during COVID when we were looking at some different processes and procedures. So I want to just go through the scenario and the challenges that we had last year when Model UN had to do some virtual competitions. Let me tell that little story and then we'll go ahead and introduce them and their achievements. So as you know, Model UN is an educational simulation. It's an academic activity where students learn about diplomacy, international affairs, and the United Nations. It's meant to engage students and allow them to develop and understand the current world issues and work with their peers on global situations. Well, back in 2020-21, due to COVID pandemic, the Model UN club, their participation in their collegiate competitions went from in-person to a virtual platform using Zoom. Now, they couldn't use Google Meet, which is our district's platform, because of the requirements of the educational experience and certain things that they had to do on Zoom that they, they couldn't do with Google Meet. So that's where we, as a district, stepped in. Myself, along with our technology mentor at the high school, Mrs. Santoro, and our information services manager, Mr. Miller. Under the leadership of Model UN President George Stephanoff, who you'll hear from in just a couple of minutes, along with the advisor, Mary Ann Pantera, we met with them to get the ball rolling. In collaboration, as I mentioned, with Mr. Miller, we worked to develop a process where Model UN, along with other teachers in the district, could request access to a variety of meeting platforms, so not just Zoom, possibly WebEx if they needed it, Teams if they needed it. But those would be not just automatic. There would be a certain set of steps that they would need to follow in order to get that virtual educational experience when Google Meet wouldn't be sufficient. So we worked together, as I just mentioned, to create a process, one that would serve the needs of Model UN and additionally, the faculty who might wish to take advantage of any speakers visiting their classrooms virtually or taking their students on a virtual field trip. So once the process was developed, we needed a way to share this information with the teachers. And George was amazing. George stood up and said he would go ahead and chronicle the steps that we took in the process. What we'd like to do is share it's a one and a half minute video with you on how easy it is for a teacher to set up an alternative meeting platform for their students for a variety of educational experiences, including the virtual field trips. So what I'd like to do now is introduce you to George and Mrs. Pantera to share their video and then their achievements. George?
Could you remind me of the previous presentation I was on, right? Thank you.
How would you like to take your students 240 miles above Earth and pop into the International Space Station? Have you ever dreamed of peeking over the shoulders of ocean scientists as they study cobbins, octopus, and sea lions in a fjord in Alaska? Or maybe even take a tour of Le Havre in Paris with a docent to guide you in your class through some masterpieces at the Mona Lisa and the Venus Dam? These extraordinary experiences, which were never possible before, are now just a click away. Now, it's an awesome new opportunity for you and your students, virtual field trips. The last year has been tough to say the least, but it has brought about some new opportunities that previously have not existed. Many organizations are now offering the ability to visit them virtually. In the past, we never really had a mechanism in place to allow that to happen. Now we do. A digital form, which looked very similar to the pager field trip forms, is now available to you. When you fill out the form, please answer all the questions and attempt a spreadsheet of the students who will be attending the field trip. Once submitted, our Information Services Department will provide your students access to the required platform. Please make sure you are submitting the request a minimum of 10 school days in advance. On the day of the event, you and your students will simply log in using the information provided from the IS department, and you will be on your way. For further information, please contact the tech mentor in your building. This is truly the entire world at your fingertips.
So thank you very much. I want to thank Mrs. Ziegler especially, and of course, the IT department, and of course, Mrs. Santoro, who really helped us jumpstart taking us into this virtual world during the pandemic. We didn't know what to expect with Model UN because we've always done it in person, but they allowed us the opportunity to be very competitive. And last year was probably one of our best years ever. I would like to say a little, a couple of things about George. Due to the fact that George is extraordinary as our president, George, as our president in the past two years, has represented our club, not just with academic awards for Model United Nations, but has also taken an active role outside of his educational experience. This past summer, George has done a research internship on UN peacekeeping operations for UB Professor Dr. Jacob Cutman and has been given publishing credit for his work. George also has completed his college interview with Georgetown University, where he's seeking a major in international relations. George has also been admitted to the Virtual National Security Language Initiative, a program of the United States Department of State's Bureau of Education and Cultural Affairs. He will be studying intensive Russian from January to March of this coming year, 2022. George has been a wonderful example to his fellow Model UN members of what leadership can look like when you have the passion for what you believe in. He has taken the time to work with new members, helping them understand how to research and prepare for Model United Nations competitions. Our successes last year and this can be attributed to George and his role as president. I am now going to turn over the rest of the presentation over to George and the club members.
Thank you, Mrs. Pantera. Good evening. I would like to thank Dr. Valaway and Lancaster School Board for allowing us this evening to present the last two years of Lancaster's Model United Nations accomplishments. Model UN is very important to me because of all the invaluable experiences and knowledge I've gained over the past three and a half years. This club is the reason that I want to focus my future studies on international relations. Model UN is teaching students the skills of the future, collaboration, communication, research, debate, and presentation, just to name a few, as well as a better understanding of how our ever-evolving world works. That is why Mrs. Pantera and I made a very strong effort to adapt the club to meet the 21st century needs within a pandemic and make it work in any model, be it in-person, remote, or hybrid. The virtual field trip system that you just saw in the video allows us to do that. We are able to fully participate in conferences and share resolution documents, a crucial part of Model UN, with students outside of the Lancaster domain. Model UN is truly a revolutionary force in adapting to any circumstance. We are extending to the full potential of what a club can be at Lancaster, and I'm very honored to have been a part of it. I invite you to watch this one and a half minute promotional video that we have created to learn a little bit more about Model UN.
Four reasons to join the Lancaster High School's Model United Nations. Number one, learn and debate about relevant global issues. Before a Model United Nations conference, you are assigned topics in a country, and it is your job to research your country's foreign policy. You are essentially acting as a nation's diplomat or ambassador. The LHS Model UN has studied topics such as the issues of outer space, human rights in the mass surveillance world, equitable access to COVID-19 vaccines in developing countries, and others such as climate change, historical conflicts, and women's rights. Number two, improve public speaking and leadership skills. At a conference, you speak and negotiate with other delegates to form resolutions upon your countries, just like in the real United Nations. This greatly improves public speaking and reasoning skills. Number three, meet new people and go to new places. The LHS Model UN club attends annual conferences at Phoenicians College and St. Bonaventure University. Number four, Model UN is one of the top extracurriculars for college. Participating in Model UN will get you leverage in any career field and put you ahead of the competition for college. Model UN helps you get a global understanding of the world, which is super important to employers in all fields and can even open up many international opportunities for you. Join the LHS Model United Nations family. We can't wait to meet you.
Thank you. Now, I would like to introduce you to Emma Allmider and Alyssa Cornacki, who will share some of their experiences from the club.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alyssa Cornacki.
And my name is Emma Allmider, and we are both seniors at Lancaster High School.
Model UN has given us the skills to succeed in real-world situations and form compromises. I joined Lancaster's Model UN team to learn about pressing issues in our community.
And I joined Model UN to learn how to make informed decisions that can someday affect our futures. Since I joined Model UN my junior year, I have created long-lasting friendships through virtual and this year's in-person competitions. Throughout our experiences, we learned how to effectively communicate our beliefs and understand the point of views of others.
Model UN has grown into a family of students, and we pride ourselves on our ability to participate as members of our school and community. Without this organization, we would not be who we are today. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma and Alyssa. Now, I would like to invite up Farhan Habibi Karamani and Srija Yarabolu.
Hi, everyone. So Model United Nations has allowed me to be put into a lot of different situations that I would not have been able to be put in if I didn't join this club. For example, at last year's St. Bonaventure virtual meeting, I was able to collaborate with a lot of other different school districts and learn from all the students there. Because people from other school districts have a lot of different viewpoints that you wouldn't really see here at Lancaster. And that's something really valuable at Model UN because you can learn from the people in other school districts, not just with the topic that you're doing at hand, but even with like, character and other leadership skills that you can pick up on those students. And additionally, Model UN has allowed me to learn about other world issues that I wouldn't have known about. Like, for example, there was women's rights abuses in other parts of the world that you wouldn't really think about unless it was like, brought to your face. So Model United Nations has really allowed me to learn a lot about the world and also learn from a lot of other people. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Srija Yarabolu. Model UN is a great opportunity for students to learn skills they don't typically get to learn in a school setting. I joined this club for the opportunity to grow as a thinker. That's exactly what Model UN does. We get to learn how to problem solve and collaborate with other schools. Even when there's differing views on how to reach a resolution, the experience gives us exposure to real-world settings. We have the opportunity to research topics and obtain information about the countries we're assigned, which allows us to understand the viewpoints of other places that aren't our own country. In my personal experience, Model UN has allowed me to look at issues on a global level and really understand why it is so important that we look into the world for a different perspective. Even people with different career paths can join Model UN because of the various committees. This provides for a diverse environment with people learning skills that are required for many fields. Since the beginning of my time at Model UN, I've gone to make many friends who share similar and different interests with me and gotten the chance to know them better through working together to prepare for conferences. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to talk about our club.
And finally, last but not least, Saman Yu Jana Paridi and Evan Cornwell.
Hello, my name is Saman Yu Jana Paridi, the co-secretary of the Model United Nations Club here at Lancaster. Ever since I joined this club, I have grown to greatly appreciate what this club has done for me within a period of time. Of all the clubs I have had the pleasure of being part of, this one uniquely stands out because it brings out the whole nine yards: researching, debating, and most of all, teamwork. The end result of all of this hard work culminates in a very rewarding experience that not only broadens my view of the world, but also allows me to exercise valuable skills in future occupations. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Evan Cornwell. And when I first joined Model UN, I really didn't know what it was about or anyone in the club. And for the past two years, I've gotten to learn about how to solve real-world problems that might change the future someday. And I didn't know Saman Yu, and we ended up becoming a great team. And I just love working with other people in this great team and other school districts. Thank you.
At the 2021 St. Bonaventure University Model UN Conference, we competed against schools such as Cowersport, who placed third, Mercyhurst Prep School, who placed second, but with a combined team effort, Lancaster High School was able to win first-place top school delegation. Board President Mr. Sage... Board President Mr. Sage, I would like to invite you up to present awards to the members who contributed to our St. Bonaventure win as well as individual awards at conferences over these past two years. Emma Allmider. Evan Cornwell. Maya Cronin. Samantha Chirjniko. Farhan Habibi Karamani. Saman Yu Jana Paridi. Alyssa Cornacki. Emma McCann. And Srija Yarabolu.
Thank you very much, Board President. At this time, I just want to do a special award. Mrs. Lozinski, can you please come up? For the role as advisor during the St. Bonaventure Model United Nation competition last March, I was stricken with COVID a week before the competition. And Mrs. Lozinski, who has been at my side for the last 10 years, as a volunteer helper with Lancaster Model United Nation Club, stepped up that day of the competition and encouraged the students to do their best. That personal touch by Mrs. Lozinski helped Lancaster achieve the Best Team Award. The last time we won the award at St. Bonaventure for Best Team, her son Cody was my president. He is now an administrator for Southwest Airlines' National and International Cybersecurity Division. This gavel is given to the best advisor at St. Bonaventure, and on that day in March, Mrs. Lozinski was the best advisor. Thank you very much.
Let's have one more round of applause for George. Let's have one more round of applause for George. Thank you all so much. I can't wait to hear about the amazing things that you all do in your careers after Lancaster. All right, moving on to 5.0 correspondence. We have 19 emails on record and one letter. 6.0, can I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of 6.1 regular session November 1, 2021? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 7.0, items from staff organizations? Anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association? Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association?
Good evening. Just really quickly, I want to introduce Mark Reno. Mark is our new secondary vice president. He was just slid into the position last week, so we just wanted to introduce him to the board and also just to wish the district and the community a very merry holiday season. And if you're a Seinfeld fan, a happy Festivus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abraham, and welcome, Mr. Reno. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? And anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? All right, 8.0, board reports. Any board members have anything to report? 9.0, superintendent's administrative report. Dr. Bailey, anything today?
Not today, Mr. Sage.
Thank you. 10.0, old business? Anyone have any old business to discuss? Onto 11.0, new business. 11.1, personnel items. 11.1.1, can I have a motion on the personnel changes? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 11.2, education items. 11.2.1, can I have a motion on the Committee on Special Education? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 11.2.2, can I have a motion on the Committee on Preschool Special Education? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Onto 12.0, business and financial items. 12.1, can I have a motion on the financial items? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.2, can I have a motion for the policy adoption 7440, student voter registration and preregistration? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. We have three policy first readings. 12.3, 7131, education of students in temporary housing. 12.4, 8240, instruction in certain subjects. 12.5, 8280, instruction for English language learners. We will have two more readings before we vote on that in the third. 12.6, can I have a motion on the food service monthly reports for October 2021? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.7, can I have a motion on the contract with Rachel Schneider, Licensed Behavioral Analyst, PLLC? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.8, can I have a motion on the contract with Erie One Bozies? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.9, can I have a motion on the contract for Lancaster Iroquois De Pue Girls Hockey? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.10, can I have a motion on the AIA contract with IBC Engineering PC? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.11, can I have a motion on the AIA contract for Young and Right Architectural? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.12, can I have a motion on the proposal for Jacobs Land Surveying? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.13, can I have a motion on the surplus equipment? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.14, can I have a motion on the tax surcharge for Bender's and Properties, Inc.? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.15, can I have a motion on the tax surcharge for Stop &amp; Shop Companies, Inc.? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.16, can I have a motion on the tax surcharge for Passucci? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.17, can I have a motion on the contract for Wesley Krantz? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. 12.18, can I have a motion on the contract with Andrew Hafner? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Before we finish up, I just want to let Mr. Glenn Jackson, who's excused from tonight's meeting. 13.0, public hearing. We do not have anyone scheduled to speak today. 14.0 is an executive session to discuss the superintendent's mid-year evaluation negotiations with Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association and Lancaster Association of Surface Personnel. Folks, that effectively ends the meeting for the public tonight. I thank you all for coming out, and our next meeting is going to be January 10, 2022, 7:00 PM, at William Street School. Can I have a motion to go into executive session? Any comments or questions? All those in favor? Anyone against? Motion carries. Go Bills!